...period of our city's history and the next. Today, we bid farewell to seven esteemed colleagues on the council, including myself. Many years of shared experiences, spirited debates, and collective achievements. Our tenure may have just been a fraction of this city's long history, but what we have accomplished together will echo forward. Just a few items of note. Under the mayor's leadership, we enacted zero fare bus transit. We finished a brand-new $1.5 billion single terminal airport. The voters, with our encouragement, approved a $125 million bond to upgrade our parks, our pools, our public spaces. Also, a $50 million bond for more affordable housing in the city. Council, with leadership of my former colleagues, enacted a $30 million violence prevention fund. There is now record-high investment in street servicing, thanks to our staff, our members of Public Works, our city manager's office. Council enacted a new LGBTQ commission, new building construction codes, adoption of a new climate action plan, and I got my recycling cart yesterday. Thank you, Public Works. We've hired the city's first-ever chief equity officer, which is hard to believe, and we have now the city's most diverse leadership team in history, along with better pay and better benefits for the city's labor class of employees. And all of this while achieving a record-high fund balance, a stable credit rating, and during a worldwide multi-year pandemic. These are just a few examples I mention not to tout our achievements, but to mention what can happen if we all work together with a collective vision and a shared commitment to our city's residents. To the incoming council members, this day marks the beginning of your journey. You can now live out your vision, display your energy, and show your commitment to serve the city of Kansas City. This journey will be both rewarding and challenging. Your ideas and efforts will be met with division, with distrust, occasionally anger, and often much negativity. But I mention this to say that you must not be deterred by that. The key to our past successes has been because of something different. It's been because leadership has begun with listening, with respect for differing opinions, with having difficult conversations, and pushing together for positive change. We look forward to seeing how each of you will build upon this foundation. Kansas City is a remarkable city, and our people are our greatest assets. They deserve leaders who will champion their causes, bring forth new ideas, and face our challenges head-on. So as we turn the page of this new chapter in Kansas City, we do so with hope and optimism. To the new council, I have no doubt that you will carry this torch forward. You're going to light up Kansas City through innovation, through inclusion, and good governance, and this city is ready and waiting for your leadership. To my fellow Kansas Cityans, we must continue to ask tough questions. We have to continue to contribute our ideas and our energy to the process and to hold our new elected officials accountable. For ultimately, it is our city, and our participation is crucial to their success. So let us make this next chapter in our city's history better than the last. May we all, in our own ways, continue to build a Kansas City that is kinder, fairer, more just, stronger, and ever more vibrant. And so, to my future colleagues, to my future council members, good luck, and to all of you, God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem McNannes. I am now honored to welcome Kansas Governor Laura Kelly.
Oh, thank you, Major Thompson, for that introduction, and good morning, everyone. You know, I am truly delighted. No, actually, I am honored, honored to be here with you today to officially get Mayor Lucas's second term underway. You know, Quinton Lucas's decisive reelection this past June is a testament to the majority's desire for steady, responsible, and effective leadership. You know, since his time on the city council, he has shown both a willingness and an aptitude for tackling tough issues head-on and doing so with a maturity that far exceeds his mere 38 years, especially in the world of politics where maturity doesn't necessarily come with I am personally grateful for Mayor Lucas's unrelenting optimism, his steadfast leadership, and his commitment to improving infrastructure, transportation, and affordable housing at a time when business is booming in the greater Kansas City region. We are in a period of unprecedented economic and job growth. The mayor has been instrumental in several of the projects that have spurred that growth, including the new terminal at KCI International Airport, the KCI Logistics Park, and the KC Metro Region selection as a host city for the 2026 World Cup. And while I'm at it, why don't we take credit for the Chiefs' Super Bowl victory? Happened under our watch. Mayor Lucas was also a crucial partner in ending the border wars between our two states in 2019. It's natural for healthy competition to arise between neighboring states when it comes to business growth and job creation. But for years, Kansas and Missouri allowed what should have been a friendly contest to spiral into something more adversarial that ended up being a hindrance to our shared growing jobs in both of our states. Giving companies incentives to jump back and forth between Kansas and Missouri was a complete waste of time and money that didn't benefit either of our states. When I became governor of Kansas, one of my top priorities from day one was putting an end to this nonsense. And with the engagement of Missouri officials like Mayor Lucas and Governor Parson, who recognized that when it comes to job growth in the metro region, a win for Kansas is also a win for Missouri and vice versa, we were able to get it done. You know, that renewed spirit, that renewed spirit of cooperation and collaboration between Kansas and Missouri is a win for both states and everyone who lives in this region. You know, although, that being said, Mayor Lucas, my offer to annex your fair city still You all heard that. You know, since he took office four years ago, Mayor Lucas has been a champion of the people with a singular goal in mind: to get things done that benefit all the people and that puts Kansas City and this region on the map. He is a rising political star at both the state and the national level. And I think his running for a second term as mayor of his beloved hometown at a time when so many other opportunities were knocking speaks volumes about his commitment to Kansas City and the people who call it home, including his wife Catherine and their adorable two-year-old son Bennett. Congratulations, Mayor Q, on your well-deserved reelection, and I look forward to continuing to work with you to grow the KC Metro Region into an economic powerhouse and a coveted place to live. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to the major.
Thank you, Governor, very much. Well, we have a special guest with us here today. She is the very first executive director for Moms Demand Action, a movement of mothers across the country fighting for gun safety and gun violence prevention. Under Angela's leadership, Moms Demand Action continues to push bipartisan policymakers to pass laws that keep families and communities safe. Please help me welcome Moms Demand Action Executive Director Angela Farrell Sabala.
Thank you so much, Major Thompson. You make me sound so good. I'm going to have to take you on the road with me, if you don't mind. Good morning, everyone. I am so thrilled to be here today with you as we swear in gun sense champions Mayor Lucas and members of the Kansas City City Council. But before we get started, I want to acknowledge the survivors of gun violence who have joined us today. The depth and breadth of our country's gun violence crisis has made us a nation of survivors. Survivors are the heart of the gun violence prevention movement and the ones who inspire us to keep going every single day. So thank you for your leadership, courage, and grace. We're honored to do this work with you. I'm going to pause. Thank you. Mayor Lucas, I'm here today on behalf of thousands of Moms Demand Action and Students Demand Action volunteers and survivors to thank you for being an ally in the fight for gun safety. The vital work you've already done around gun violence prevention here in Kansas City is inspiring, and I have no doubt you'll continue to build on that progress as you begin this new term. Mayors and city council members play a crucial role in the fight for gun safety. So many of the policies we rely on to keep our families and communities safe are set by local leaders, and some of the most innovative ways to address this public health crisis have started right here in cities and then become a blueprint for state and federal action. Mayor Lucas has been a steadfast example of what this leadership looks like in practice. In fact, his work to keep communities safe has been so strong that we didn't just make him co-chair of Mayors Against Illegal Guns, but we named him our 2022 Local Gun Sense Lawmaker of the Year. Well deserved, well deserved. During his first term, Mayor Lucas and gun sense champions on the city council showed that they were serious about addressing this crisis, passing key ordinances to keep guns out of the hands of domestic abusers and protect children and teens. And he's not just innovating in the legislature. Since taking office in 2019, Mayor Lucas has proven time and time again that he's willing to put the safety of Kansas City families first, and he isn't afraid to stand up to the gun industry in the process. In 2020, Kansas City became the first city in more than a decade to sue members of the gun industry for their role in funneling illegal guns into their community. Together with every town law, Kansas City filed a lawsuit against Heminist Arms and several local gun dealers to send a clear message. Your actions fueling this gun violence crisis have consequences, and if you engage in reckless business practices, you will be held responsible. The lawsuit led one local gun dealer to close up shop and surrender his federal firearms license, while another agreed to adopt a code of conduct that would keep guns out of the hands of criminals. When Heminist Arms attempted to avoid the lawsuit by filing for bankruptcy, Kansas City filed the company into bankruptcy court to make sure it was held accountable. Put simply, Mayor Lucas and the city council leadership in bringing this lawsuit not only helped to combat gun trafficking here in Kansas City, it showed other cities across the country that there is a path to holding the gun industry accountable in court. This is one of the ways that Mayor Lucas has shown he's a national leader on this issue. Along with other Mayors Against Illegal Guns co-chairs, he pushed for federal legislation, federal action, helping to make the most significant federal gun legislation in a generation a reality. We also know a public health crisis as complex as gun violence needs holistic policy solutions. And it's not a coincidence that Black and Brown communities that have been historically under-resourced are also the ones that have disproportionately impacted by gun violence. So I commend Mayor Lucas and members of the city council for the work you've done to help make housing, public transportation, and life here in Kansas City fair and more equitable. By prioritizing youth programming and community violence intervention work, you're investing in solutions that we know give people alternatives to violence. The work you've done with Partners for Peace Program to support violence interrupters shows you're committed to taking a public health approach to this crisis. And that matters because we know that when people are able to meet their most basic needs and plan for their futures, we help address the root causes of violence. We know there's more work to be done because, like many cities across the country, Kansas City is experiencing unacceptable levels of gun violence. This work is challenging, but I know you'll continue to build on the progress you've made and find creative solutions that focus on violence prevention and intervention. Even at a tough political landscape, this mayor and city council have shown they won't stop fighting to save lives. We know it's going to take all of us working together to truly address this crisis, and that's where the amazing people in red shirts and the incredible community partners who are here with us today come in. It's an honor to be joined by so many of our mighty Missouri Moms Demand Action and Students Demand Action volunteers and community partners. You've been crucial partners in the fight for a safer Kansas City and a safer Missouri, and I'm so proud of what you've accomplished. There's still more work to be done, of course, but it's clear that when the going gets tough, that Moms Demand Action, Missouri Moms Demand Action, and Students Demand Action, and survivors and community partners get going. During the last legislative session, Missouri Moms Demand Action and Students Demand Action volunteers succeeded in getting lawmakers to reject all gun lobby's dangerous priority bills, including a bill that would have forced guns into sensitive places such as worship, places of worship, and public transit. They did it making themselves a continuous presence at hearings, testifying against reckless bills, and refusing to let lawmakers weaken their gun laws. In short, they rolled up their sleeves and did the heavy lifting of grassroots advocacy, and they're ready to do it again. So Mayor Lucas and members of the city council, remember that you have these committed local gun safety advocates and community partners ready to work shoulder to shoulder with you as you tackle the crisis. Together, I know that you can accomplish incredible things. And on behalf of Moms Demand Action and Students Demand Action volunteers across this country, I want to say thank you. You've led the way on so many policies that show you're addressing this crisis with the urgency that it demands. I also close by saying that I'm a lifelong organizer, so I hold the art and skill of advocacy and organizing so close to my heart because I've seen the immense power we have when we unite around a shared goal. When regular people show up day in and day out, transformative things can happen, and I know that's true here in Kansas City. So congratulations, Mayor Lucas, and members of the city council. I look forward to seeing what lifesaving progress we can continue to make together. And with that, I'd like to invite Mayor Q and his beautiful family to the stage.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. As Mayor Quinton Lucas takes the stage now for the oath of office, please welcome Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals Judge William Dwayne Benton, who will administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Quinton Lucas..."
"I, Quinton Lucas..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...to solemnly swear..."
"I possess all qualifications..."
"I possess all qualifications..."
"...for the office of mayor..."
"For the office of mayor..."
"...of the city of Kansas City..."
"Of the city of Kansas City..."
"I am not subject to any disqualifications..."
"I am not subject to any disqualifications..."
"In the Charter of Kansas City as amended..."
"In the Charter of Kansas City as amended..."
"I will support the Constitution and laws..."
"I will support the Constitution and laws..."
"Of the United States..."
"Of the United States..."
"And of the state of Missouri..."
"And of the state of Missouri..."
"I will observe the provisions..."
"I will observe the provisions..."
"Of the Charter of Kansas City..."
"Of the Charter of Kansas City..."
"And the ordinances of Kansas City..."
"And the ordinances of Kansas City..."
"I will faithfully discharge..."
"I will faithfully discharge..."
"The duties of the office..."
"The duties of the office..."
"As mayor of the city of Kansas City..."
"As mayor of the city of Kansas City..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations.
And now we have Mayor Quinton Lucas.
Good morning, everybody. How y'all doing today? We have surprisingly nice August weather here in Kansas City, so we are delighted to have you with us. I thank you, all of our special guests and dignitaries. It means a lot that you would spend time with us today. So in studying Angela, who you got to meet earlier today, I learned that she is a mother of four children. And one bit of advice that she always gave to her children was, "If you ever get lost, find a mom." Angela imparted that to them growing up, but that is advice that she proves today and every day as a leader of Moms Demand Action and as a national leader in building safer communities for all. Thank you, Angela, not just for coming to Kansas City, but for truly saving lives throughout our country. Thank you, Angela, for being with us today. To the many other mothers for Moms Demand, from other organizations, mothers in charge, some who I got to visit with today, on behalf of this father, of this mayor, of this Kansas Cityan, we appreciate you and we thank you tremendously. "If you ever get lost, find a mom" also has been sage advice for communities near us as they confronted challenge and opportunity over recent years. In Kansas, a mother and a grandmother rescued a declining budget, trusted public health experts, protected our neighbors during COVID-19 and us, and has brought success, optimism, and billions of dollars in investment to the Sunflower State and the Kansas City region. Governor Laura Kelly, I am so tremendously honored to call you a mentor and a friend, and we are blessed by your presence today. And if you didn't notice, an odd bit of faith, the Missouri flag blocked our view of each other the entire time I said that. Missouri wanted it. Many moms here today are firsts. My sister in the collective of mayors, Tashara Jones, shines each day as a woman who has taken the mantle of a system and a city not originally built for someone like her, for someone like me, for so many in our collective communities. But as a Black woman, as a mother, and as a leader, she has succeeded, and she has brought positive change in a way not seen for generations in the city of St. Louis. I ask that St. Louis Mayor Tashara Jones please stand and be recognized by us all today. And the moms from our own city, serving now on city council, represent a refreshing set of firsts. Our first council with three Black women, featuring a Black woman, Councilwoman Raina Park Shaw as mayor pro tem. Mayor Pro Tem elect, stand up and get yours, too. And five moms total, educators, healthcare professionals, planners, lawyers, and business people. Your insight at times, we agree, but more so when we may not, will be invaluable as we chart a path for a safer and stronger city over the four years ahead. In 2019, obviously, I and some of us who are returning didn't know what was yet to come. I spoke then about basic services. We would focus, as was the plan, on housing, public safety, and improving other city services. And in many ways, we did. Kansas City's Affordable Housing Trust Fund is now fully funded, which is creating thousands of safe, stable, quality, and truly affordable housing units so kids and families can leave homelessness, that I and too many others have known, and do what we want all kids to be able to do: not worry while they'll sleep, how their family may get by, but instead giving kids the chance to just be children. To all the advocates, to all the electeds, to everybody on staff who played a role in getting us a fully capitalized trust fund, please stand and be recognized. We thank you for the work that you have done. We're paying our workers more, providing long overdue support for the people who keep this city running. And yes, as was noted before, we have resurfaced 15% of the city's streets in the past several years, reversing years of underinvestment in our infrastructure. The next four years will be a great accomplishment to Kansas City. The opening of the first professional sports stadium purpose-built for women's sports will take place on the banks of the Missouri River in the months ahead. The eyes of the world will be on Kansas City Arrowhead Stadium in the east side of our city as we host the 2026 Soccer World Cup. And yes, Governor, we hope and pray that the Chiefs, who have been to three Super Bowls during our time so far, will continue to give us reason to celebrate. But in Kansas City, we recognize our many accomplishments, and I look at you, Chief Graves, our first female chief of police in the 148-year history of the Kansas City Police Department. We recognize much that we've accomplished, but we recognize also the work we have to do. So far this year, due to the work of many, shootings, non-fatal shootings are actually down by 6%, reversing a years-long trend. But all the while homicides are up dramatically. And in Kansas City, I say clearly and unambiguously, guns and ammunition being given to minors, guns in the hands of the wrong people, guns modified to be more potent than prohibition-era machine guns are the problem and are killing our community. That's why we are introducing this week new legislation drafted to avoid Missouri's preemption laws that will outlaw the distribution of ammunition to minors without parental consent, that will outlaw the possession and sale of components like handgun switches that turn handguns into fully automatic weapons that have sprayed too many clubs, our parks, our streets with hundreds of rounds of bullets, and increasingly outgun our police officers who are responding to emergencies. We know, however, that gun laws alone cannot solve the epidemic. Led by Mayor Pro Tem-designate Park Shaw, Councilwoman Melissa Robinson, and the majority of my colleagues on the last council, the city has made a transformative investment in violence prevention, spending millions in recognition that jobs, mentorship, healthcare, and hope are important to reversing a generational concern in our community, and in many ways more important than any legal prohibitions can accomplish. I grew up with my big sister here in Kansas City, Trina, loving Mayor Cleaver's Night Hoops program, and we're proud to have it back and to be building even more efforts to provide year-round engagement and support for our children with Parks and Recreation and support from our Violence Prevention Fund. But to build stability in young people's lives, we also need to ensure they have safe and stable places to sleep. I have been blessed immensely, but I still have never forgotten late motel room nights, completing homework assignments in the bathroom, as to not wake up family in the adjoining one room at the motel. And many had it worse than me, and many today have it worse, but I still don't wish that on anyone. That's why we are committed as a city to producing at least 8,000 units of affordable housing from our Housing Trust Fund and strategic economic development investments over the next four years. And housing will not just be in apartment communities. We are paving the way for thousands of vacant land bank, single-family homes to be renovated and improved. And of course, as we talk about housing, we recognize that once and for all, we need to ban source-of-income discrimination in housing to ensure that more low-income Kansas Cityans can access housing opportunities. No matter how you lawfully pay your bills or your rent, whether it's through housing vouchers, government assistance, or anything under the sun, you should not be denied a place to stay. And last year, we created a plan to end homelessness in Kansas City, and today, we are issuing requests for proposals to create our city's first low-barrier shelter, equipped with case managers, provide wraparound services to support those who need assistance obtaining employment, mental health, and other healthcare support, and permanent housing. We are doing this work while we continue to deliver basic services to our residents. And I could not be more grateful for the women and men who put on uniforms for our city or come into our buildings each day. We are proud over the last four years to have passed pay increases, but we know more is due: better compensation, support for daycare and early childhood care, particularly in the core of our city, and more respect. At a time when some see labor as a commodity, we see you and your value and will stand against outsourcing, we will stand for fair wages, we will stand for prevailing wage on city projects, and we will continue to, as long as it is permissible, to use affirmative action to ensure in the workplace that those who have been long denied an opportunity in our city to get a fair chance or fair work are able to get work on projects that this city takes on. And opportunity in Kansas City means opportunity for all. No legislature in Jefferson City, or Topeka, or Washington can deny you your humanity, your love, and Kansas City's support for you living the very best life you can build. When we say "all are welcome here," we mean all. All of your authentic selves, all of you are welcome. Kansas City is a city for all, and it has rich cultures. So we are committed to removing barriers to success and call on our federal partners to expedite the approval of work permits so even new Americans have the opportunity to get work, to build a long and stable life here in Kansas City. And I want to particularly thank my friends at places like Dela Lamb and JVS for their work in making sure that we have more resources in this city. So one of the positives of having moved a lot in Kansas City growing up is that there's a story that I have for just about every neighborhood in Kansas City. So for a while in the 1990s, I lived in what was then called President Gardens. They have a new name. Some of the same challenges might persist. But I remember a positive setting in many ways. There was a barber shop up the street, a Jamaican restaurants up the street, and there was this wonderfully maintained at the time track right down the hill. And my mom wanted to make sure I became something useful during the summers, so she made me go out down to the track and take part in a summer track program. She got me enrolled at the program, and this is about at 83rd and Truce. My memories have faded somewhat, but all I remember basically was that every day it was about 99 degrees outside, there was no tree, there was no breeze, and I had this coach who was yelling at me all the time, a man named Ken Ferguson, taught at UMC City Law School. And he would belt out these instructions and say, "Accelerate, accelerate," and run out if you're doing something wrong, and say, "Lucas, I'm working on your mental toughness." So I came home each day after practice. I was sore, I was tired, and my mother would never let me give up. And each day on the track, a new obstacle would come up: a sore muscle, a strong competitor. And for any of you who've ever competed in sports, you know, when you're kind of scrawny at age 12 or something, somebody else comes up and looks like an Olympian, and you're like, "I don't know how I'm going to beat him." But I kept going back. And I asked my mom, "Can I ever go do something else?" And she said, "You go right back out there." And I would go back on that track, and I would hear, "Accelerate, accelerate." And just somehow, it always got hotter, but I was still there. Over the past four years in Kansas City, through COVID-19, through protests, through challenges ranging from homicides to how we can take care of our workers, I heard that voice again, that "Accelerate, accelerate." And I knew there was someone back home who was curing me on along the way. Well, today, Kansas City, I thank you for all of these mothers' voices: Angela, Governor, Councilwomen, Quincy, my mother, Catherine, and so many more. You have kept this city moving through triumph and tragedy. You continue to push this city forward. And as I stand before you today, I know that we can be one of the greatest cities in the world. We can be a model of how we treat our unhoused sisters and brothers. We can be a model of how we treat our workers. We can be a model of the fact that life is not either or. Solutions to public safety take prevention, they take intervention, they take enforcement, but more than anything, they take all of us working together. And we can know that we can be in the heart of America, but we can lead with our hearts.